All right, everyone called order, rule call.
Yes, Subio, Jimmy Bear, Arthur, Justin Stanley, Kim Searke, I'm Jay April, and I'm here.
Okay, who's posting? For allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America, we are the republic for which we stand, one nation, and one God, in this world with the freedom of justice, law.
Second. Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom. Isaiah.
Yep.
And Kim.
Yes.
What about...
I want to approve the meeting minutes of August 29th.
One more second. Uh, Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Enter group that dispersements in payroll. One more second.
Second.
Discussion. And Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
And Kim. Uh, board present, um, I only have a couple things, um, actually Sue, Sue covered in her letter to the paper in response to Ms. Limkey and her concerns, uh, very well, I thought. Uh, there's two inaccuracies I'd like to point out, one was, uh, in Ms. Limkey's letter was the, about sports that it was due to financial concerns, uh, that we were cutting sports because of it, or not cutting, but, uh, reviewing it, which that's not correct, we were mainly talking because of low participation, uh, and safety issues. And the other was, uh, the retroactive to Dr. Elworthy's pay, that was already earned by Dr. Elworthy and we were just taking care of business on it, so I just wanted to correct those inaccuracies on that. Other than that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
I have a correction.
Okay.
In the paper, because I didn't know at the time, Bellevalli did not have listed a business manager, they pay their superintendent, I think, a hundred and thirty thousand, they just hired a business manager for a hundred, or eighty-nine thousand dollars.
On top of their superintendent.
On top of their superintendent.
Yes.
Bellevalli has a bookkeeper, but it's not organized like us. Enrollment right now, or as of last Tuesday, I just passed it out to the board, John can give you a copy, our high school is at two fifteen, middle school one fifty-seven, Mazo Maney one forty-three, and Black Earth one ninety-two, understanding that four sections of Black Earth are half day, four, three sections of four K and also early childhood. So, um, we're, our district as of last Tuesday is at seven oh seven for, for the year. Uh, great start to this school year, a lot of enthusiasm, um, you know, just glad to see all the students and staff, and, you know, I think it's gonna be a great year. Couple reminders, Highway fourteen meeting, uh, this is for the entrance, that is September seventeenth, five to seven, in this room, it's the DOT reviewing, they'll show the plans present, looking for public feedback. The assessor has been here, so it, it tells me they're pretty serious, he's contracted by the state, um, again, uh, point eight-two acres is the change, if you go out in the parking lot, or if you've seen blue marks on the parking lot, on the grass, that is, you know, the temporary easements that would occur during construction, uh, one of the bigger things you'll notice, one of the, as he looked at things, we may have to move the practice or the youth football field ten feet north, uh, don't worry, the DOT compensates us for that, and for, for any changes, so, they fo, have this formula, he'll be out again, um, and I'll share it with you when that information becomes available.
What time does that mean?
Which one?
The seventeen, five?
Five to seven.
Notice I got for that meeting said, I thought with certainty, that the project is gonna happen in two thousand and fourteen.
That's my, I just haven't gotten that letter.
Oh, okay. And that's probably why I brought it over, they, they didn't even mention it.
I mean, I know they've been very serious, they just, I haven't got, you know, I guess I got the release too, cause they asked, we posted it on our website.
When we had the last meeting, they were pretty confident in a point fourteen also.
Yeah, I mean, the assessor, I think, is a pretty good indicator too.
Right.
I mean, they're not, they're not gonna contract with that, him, if they're thinking about it. Yeah.
Who knows?
Who knows? And then, uh, tomorrow bid openings for the second group project, and then food service bids are open on next Monday, so, a lot of information for you, things to consider. What I have.
What about them, what, Ms. B, Tracy B?
Yeah, I just was coming out to here a little bit about the, um, or my concern is why the, um, exit is blocked so early, I, you know, I don't know a lot of the details on when they're gonna start, but it just seems, um, inconvenient for us when we're picking up and dropping off and for events, and I just wanted to express my concerns about that, that, and if you have any feedback now for me, that would be appreciated, as to why it's...
We'll be going over there a little later in the meeting.
That's why I'm here.
We'll explain the genesis of how it came about the way we're at.
Okay.
All righty. Uh, district business, budget, finance. We have, uh, discussed possible action on the twenty fifteen, fourteen contract with Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers.
We'll approve the contract with the Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers.
Second. Discussion. You ladies pretty comfortable with it? All right, Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All righty. More on discuss, it does discuss possible action on Wolf Run, it's gonna be more of a discussion, we met with them, we have a building ground meeting tonight.
I met with, uh, their group also last Friday.
Right, and I'll let Mark and I explain this to us.
Sure, in the end, what we're doing in the meeting, and I shared again today, is that the Dane, Dane County of Dane, Dane County, excuse me, will be drawing up the, they would hold the easement on Wisconsin Heights property, um, so they're gonna create the easement, as well as develop a land management plan, and then the other thing that will come in a couple weeks, is an MOU or proposed MOU, they're all, all of these are proposed, of course, um, in terms of how the trail will be maintained, spell off responsibilities, um, as I've shared to the board before, just, you know, the advice I've gotten is, you know, watching to see, you know, prohibitions are, who are the acceptable users, as well as what happens if it's not maintained, and just having some, some outs or some leverage on the district behalf. Lot of excitement, it sounds like, you know, they're working with multiple groups between here and the village of Mazo Maney, and they, they're hoping to start, um, construction on the, I guess, the north end of the trail. And we, yeah, that, that's their goal, um, and even we discussed, as things get accepted in easement, that once the soybeans are tilled out, we would create a kind of a path or make it more identifiable where it would look like on the old lines there. And we could also probably do the same thing with the mower, at some point in time, and cut, cut one notch lower if you want to. It's a twenty-five foot easement, except for behind the storage shed next to the propane tanks, as opposed to the storage shed up by Olson Road, um, and then at the end, at in the, let's see, South Parkuma, yes, South Parkuma.
One thing also we found out tonight is that the, uh, through another source of money, they're going to, uh, be working on the creek between the dam and the Crescent Street, uh, crossing, so don't confuse that, if you're in that area, don't confuse that with the construction of this path, cause that's not going to be happening, there'll be bulldozers and backhoes and turncoats down there, uh, to change the course of the Black Earth Creek. If you're familiar with it, it's straight along the railroad tracks, and that was because of the, the middle, uh, pond that was, was in Mazo Maney, and now they're going to be changing the, that back to a meandering type of stream. That's a good point to point out, Jim, on that.
So, yeah, the, uh, this will probably come back to the board maybe as early as the thirtieth, we're hoping to get, the county needed a couple months, a couple, excuse me, a couple weeks on easement process, so.
Okay.
Mark, when you say the county, you're saying the county will own the property?
On the school property.
Okay. And then what?
My understanding, that's different, well, there's DNR property, there's a private landowner, well, two private landowners, obviously, but, yeah, there'll, you know, different rules for different, um, ownerships, yeah. So, yeah, that was...
Is that because you're in this whole area?
That's my understanding.
Yep.
All righty, any more discussion on that? All right, let's move on to three, discuss possible action to approve a sixty-six point zero three oh one, we met with Milton Cross Plains School District, purchase ten days of LNC services, so, one more second.
So that's short for intergovernmental eighth agreement, maybe that's long for intergovernmental agreement. So what we're doing is to, um, we have a library support teacher this year to, how should I put it, to be compliant with the DPI for purchasing services and providing some mentorship for her and her boy. And so, what I would ask, um, Middleton was not able to provide me the final numbers as of our meeting, so I just, I, I've seen the ballpark figure, and I just, but ask the ability to negotiate.
Negotiate.
You know, it will be left, we won't, we'll pay salary, and then a, they're fiscal agents, so there's a fee, which is pretty standard, but we will have to pay an insurance thing, so they'll take care of the insurance, but we'll be responsible for, you know, the funding.
More discussion.
Can I ask a question about that?
Mm-hmm.
And this is to, or only for certain things that she needs assistance with, or it's just across the board, the person's here and is available or...
It's, it's, it's a resource, the person's here for our, our library support teacher, correct?
Okay. Sue.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Big topic, discuss possible action on the entrance exit from Milton High School parking lot. Let's kind of go over that, in my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we started this, the original plan was to have an in and out at the first entrance.
And probably the first reason we discussed it is because we thought we could be as many as two years out in making changes, is there things that we could, you know, do to improve safety.
Right. As that grew, and they found, and, and Oscar, I believe, brought it up a couple meetings ago, they had tried the buses coming in and out of that driveway and found it to be rather tight.
Where to see a train, right, even just for a regular driver.
Right, and so, at that time, we discussed was to, to move out this way now, I'll have to apologize, cause I understood that the left turn was coming down, and I don't know if anybody else did, but that's the way I understood the left turn on Olson Road was coming down, so, to me, it made sense to still close it off and keep the flow through like that, um, I know when we design, we design livestock facilities, I design grain systems, circles work best, and, uh, so that was my understanding, so I, that's where I think some of the confusion came, and then plus to change the fact that the drive wasn't really conducive to having two-way traffic, and I think we just kind of, it got kind of sidelined and readjusted and stuff like that, now we have, uh, complaints and issues, um, and I think it comes down to where we have a couple options, one, leave it like it is, which is not sounding like the most best option, uh, one option that I know Mark and I had discussed was to formally approach the town of Black Earth and see if they will eliminate the left turn on Olson Road, allowed us to use that as a, uh, full intersection, I'll call it, for lack of better words, uh, and the third option would be to, to go back to the old way until construction began, uh, on the, uh, the new entrance. So, I'll, I think covered everything on the genesis of it, and then the options, and I'll leave the floor open up to whoever you all want to say. Okay, I'll start. I figured that was coming. I, I can't go anywhere without people talking to me about it, that are not happy with the current situation, so, that being said, here's the issues that I've got, number one, I'm hearing a lot of complaints that people don't want their kids driving on KP during the winter, because that is not the most plowed road, um, and I can definitely attest to that, driving it every day when I bring my son out during winter time, um, by making people go down Olson Road and LKP to Mazo Maney, I have personally driven by this school countless times, especially on weekends, and I will tell you that every time, I have gotten slowed down to around forty-five miles an hour, Saturdays, Sundays, parking lot full, parking lot empty, doesn't make any difference, people are slowing down with all the new signage out there. When you're getting into Mazo, coming over that bridge, your visibility stinks, people are not, they're starting to slow down, um, they're still cruising along at a, at a good rate of speed, and trying to get that much traffic out onto fourteen is not easy, um, I don't know how many of you do it at, anytime at three thirty, or...
Yeah, it's not in the afternoon, it, it stinks.
The problem that I have with coming out on Olson Road, even if you were, even if you remove the left-hand turn, no left-hand turn sign, is that since the, uh, Department of Transportation redid Highway fourteen, um, you'll notice when you pull out onto fourteen, you go up, and if you're turning left, heading into Mazo, you have to go really steep down, downgrade, and turn at the same time, and it's, it, it's really difficult, I do it on Saturday mornings when I'm going to the dump, and, you know, even with people doing forty-five miles an hour, you have to take that so slow, especially in an SUV, going up, down like that, and turning at the same time, so to me, that, going out onto fourteen on Olson Road is more dangerous than coming out where the current exit is, and I'm not so sure that it isn't about the same danger as down on fourteen and into Mazo, so, that's my spiel. Anybody else?
Just a couple of thoughts, uh, what, what were you, what were your issues?
It's just inconvenient to go in the, the bridge in Mazo and try to pull out there, it's hard to see, you know, if you're in a regular car, you know, virtually SUV or bus or whatever it is, I think it's hard to see.
That's a bad intersection anyway.
Yeah, and you're, you're, and the people are coming out of town, and they're speeding up, and it's just, takes a while, um, I, I wasn't sure on the start date, and why, I was worried, wondering about why it was closed off so far in advance, I guess, also.
It's done before the school year, so that it was what he started in as is, and so, if people were starting, starting to do it, their, people were starting to trickle in, and so it wasn't like, um, you know, principal going over the announcement and saying, on Friday, on Monday, there will be a change, and so it was, the, the, the purpose of that was to announce it, it worked with the paper in terms of announcing the change, predicting the change, and so it wasn't like, how did that happen? So, that's why.
And when is the proposed starting of the construction?
Well, they've, they've promised by, and like John said, they've always promised no later than twenty fifteen, but hopefully twenty fourteen.
And you would have notice before they start, a certain amount of notice?
Well, that's what the hearings were, next week, so.
That meeting on the seventeenth or whatever?
Yep.
With, with the planned new construction, um, what was the DOT's plan with exiting? Because that said, that concrete barrier will prevent left-hand turns onto fourteen anyway, wouldn't it? No.
So, this isn't the, this is, this is as is, if you will. It, and the red, sorry, gotta remember my teacher was red. So, normal, right now, let's just say this is where you, I'm just kind of being a little arbitrary, I'll exaggerate a little bit, this is where you start to come over, and you turn in a little bit, and that type of thing.
Coming from April.
Coming from April. But the proposed option for is that this would start sooner.
I can donate some more.
Start sooner, and then veer this way, so, so, then this will be, and I'm not, this isn't the best drive, that's why I was a science teacher. This will be staggered down, so that someone taking a left will be able to see oncoming traffic, and then this will be dedicated this way, and then, you know, to go...
And then fourteen will have, in here, if this is all Highway fourteen, there'll be a dedicated turn lane grid.
Correct.
Right, right through here, so that traffic can flow through.
What's a median?
Uh, no, I wouldn't use the word median, they're, they're not using a, the term, they're not guaranteeing a median, some type of lane separation. They, they're always very clear when they give the, the PDF, that it may look like it's permanent, but it just is...
Even if, just, even if there's concrete blockers that they have running down the belt line right now, it's...
Do you have a question also?
Yeah, I have a question about that, and then I have one other thing.
Sure.
This entrance that they're going to make, is that right where the entrance is, or are they creating a brand?
No, it's where the entrance, it's an expansion of the existing entrance, and then closing what we, what we have closed right now, and then there would be some reworking in terms of parking lot form.
And then I have one other, Tracy, just a question, as a parent, if you could turn left, would that solve your problem?
I don't like to pull out there either, but if it's an option, I would do it.
Versus what you're doing now.
Right, versus pulling around, I would do it, but I, I still don't like that curb, with that new curb that they put.
Yeah.
It's funky, but I would do that before going around the other way.
And that's not guaranteed yet either, cause the town, the town, the town of Black Earth has to... I think that they built up that, that part of it, what do, what do you think, uh, you want to have?
Direct that curb.
Yeah. It's actually harder than semi than it was originally.
You always want to fold off, and amazing, these people all go down and...
I mean, you get any kind of, any kind of wintery day, where the plows have not been able, able to keep up, even though, even if, you know, we didn't close school, to try to, even if you can get a left-hand turn onto Olson Road, to try and again, navigate up and down and turn left, with any kind of ice, I guarantee you, somebody's gonna be in that ditch, and it may be somebody in the ditch, somebody behind them in their bumper, and somebody coming down fourteen, smoking the rear end of that car, so, I, I don't, I don't like going out on that.
Couple of the complaints that I had, um, of course, it was brought to my attention that the stocker, the visitors bus went out our entrance, um, and then therefore brought, you know, well, we have signs that say exit Olson Road, but they don't know where Olson Road is, and they don't know where it leads to, so, um, when you have not only buses not knowing where to go, and then you have all these other traffic, cars not knowing where to go, um, you know, they, they take Olson Road possibly, then they get to the bridge, and they're like, right, left, which way back to fourteen, you know, um, confusing for some, and then also, um, people brought to my attention, people who need to go onto seventy-eight, they would much rather be on the highway, um, and taking a right-hand turn on seventy, than going to KP to Mazo, coming back and having to cross Highway fourteen to get on seventy-eight, um, those are just things that were brought to my attention.
Can I ask a question? One of our concerns with this right now is that the buses can't get out of that.
Out of the original, what we set up now.
Well, they can get out right now, right, and it's not gonna be a lot different.
A lot substantially different.
No, this would be a lot quieter.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, no, no, they'll be quieter.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, good question, but substantially different, so the DOT's could do an extra acre, it's, it's right there.
Thank you.
Will they still keep the forty mile an hour speed limit out there?
There, there's no, you have, that, again, I'll say it's suggested, they're, they have studies, they, they've shared with us studies that essentially, you know, report that it would cause more problems for slowing down, could be an atypical highway speed, and not, I'm not asking people to agree.
No, that's what I, that's what they told us, cause I raised a bunch of things about that. The nice thing is, is that it is slowing down.
Yeah.
I mean, it really is, even not on school days.
We do it at four thirty in the morning when I go through.
Yeah.
In the morning.
I've gotten a lot of the same sentiment that Tom's gotten, the same has gotten too, but amazing to me is, is mainly EMTs and firefighters and police have been, like, the gas issue, and I'm working, and telling you about, what is this about, so, a lot, a lot of it's very similar to what you guys are hearing.
I would make a motion that we reopen the exit, um, further, well, I don't even want to put a timeline on it, we'll talk about it after. reopen it. Reopen the exit. Unless you got a better idea on that one.
What, for a motion? For a...
Yeah, I mean, there's really no timeline, because once construction starts, they're gonna, they'll, they'll do what we do, so.
I mean, yeah, the only thing is, like, you know, I haven't talked to Dan, I'm sure Dan's fine with it, but you're gonna have to stick a day or two to...
Okay with DOT.
Yeah.
Many of you have been out here for football games, and there's the most people, um, I mean, has it flowed fairly well, or is it...
I think crowded parking lot's a crowded parking lot, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna say it's...
Right, I don't say it flows, but the problem you have is people don't pay attention to the...
Right, I didn't pay attention to it until I got Oscar's email, I ignored it until I got Oscar's email this week, or last week when it went out, to be honest, don't let me forget.
It did flow relatively good Friday night when I left, however, the speed that some of the cars were going was not appropriate, and I don't know who the people were, I don't know if they were students or vendors, or I have no idea.
And on top of that, I don't know if that town road is actually built for that amount of traffic.
I would, I would suggest that town roads are town roads, I, I don't, there are less maintained roads, and that's because of lack of time, I would, I don't think I would say that.
Yeah, I wouldn't either, cause our town road takes semis, we have two semis, and they weren't there for, so.
Would they maintain it better if, if it was...
I don't think it's our, it's, I wouldn't, you know, sometimes, some things you think about, and some things you don't, I wouldn't speculate on.
Right.
Priorities and...
We do have a motion on, if you don't have a second, on Tom's motion, to open up the exit. Need more discussion on it? Have, have there been any citations issued for left-hand turns?
I have not been informed of any, nor, nor...
I haven't gotten it yet now.
Yeah, we got it on tape.
Remember all the cameras, Jim? John, did you have the paper? Yeah, well, I was, I was just wondering if that's an enforceable sign? It is an enforceable sign, yeah.
It's white.
Yep.
I'm sorry, white is enforceable, I mean, that's the, very...
I actually, uh, talked to a police officer, and he said, if you want me to go down there, tell me, you know, and wait.
You mean down here, or on the forty-five?
On the turning left, but he's not gonna do it on his own, he's been told, and I'm not telling anybody to go out.
Well, I would think that, uh, that their time...
Well, I would think that their time may be better spent.
Yeah.
Patrolling the, the thirty miles an hour coming into Mezzo Maney.
To be honest with you, I don't fully understand it.
Yeah, my, my, my support of, of the closing is based on an accident at thirty miles an hour compared to forty-five. And having to drive, drive that bridge every time, I gotta get home. I have to go up and over the biodome. And, and I turn a lot or come from K P a lot also. And, and to find that it may take a little more time just because the, the lines of vision aren't as great as they are here. But the reduced speed, even if it's five miles per hour, is certainly, to me, a lot safer than, than here.
The only thing I would argue with that about him is that, if memory serves me correctly, I don't believe we've ever had an accident exiting. I don't know.
Don't jinx it.
No, I'm just saying, I, I don't, I think most of the problems have been entering. I don't know. I'm just.
Always can happen.
And I think line of sight is a lot safer than a little bit slower speed and.
One of the things that has happened with that being closed, though, is that there has been no doubt of where to enter.
Exactly. There's a lot of confusion on that.
But you know what? Other than, other than on a Friday night or a game night, I really haven't seen anybody entering in the exit, especially since the new sign.
All the time.
All the time.
Oh, all the time.
Yeah, yeah. More, more than I should feel here. I agree with what, what you're saying. You wouldn't think it happens. And what I would say is, it happens. And that's, that's the, that's the reality.
But I don't know what the difference would be entering the exit or exiting the entrance, which is happening now.
I think, I think the hard part is, and I'm not suggesting the delay, but it's been two weeks. And two weeks in terms of a traffic pattern is just a real short period of time. You know, if people say, hey, we're ready to make a decision, great. But in terms of traffic patterns, I mean, even when the reconstruction happens when it's safer, there, it's gonna take a while. And that's the hardest part.
Yep. Two weeks.
I mean, even with the stoplight, I'm told it even takes, there are more accidents once a stoplight's put in. Which seems odd, but it's just, and people default to what, what they're used to.
Right.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
It's been a little bit.
Any more discussion on? Motion on table to open up the exit.
I have a procedural question.
Okay.
Is Tom able to create a motion to do that since he was voting in the.
Yeah, I just can't put it back on the agenda.
Right, he can't put it back on the agenda. Right. Yeah, it's a whole different ballgame thing. Uh, any more questions or discussion? All right, Sue?
No.
Jim?
No.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Put the coin. I'll say no just because it's so annoying, because I, I really think that we need to buy and we also need to buy. I don't want to.
And I'll say no. See you guys next Friday morning. Make sure you're available. All right. Action to accept a donation of two Packer tickets valued at a hundred and forty-eight dollars to be wrapped them off to benefit the Eastport Athlete Scholarship Fund.
I was gonna move as long as I wanted.
Keep buying tickets.
Sue? Second. Yes, Jim. Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Uh, Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
I don't know how big you have them.
But.
Hot as first, it's called being a big part of corporation.
All right.
You said we have to worry about that, didn't we?
First student.
First.
Yep, lived on it, that's your free.
Yeah. Uh, action to accept a donation of five hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-three cents from the Knights of Columbus to be used towards special education community outings. Do we have a motion?
So.
Second. Yeah, all right, more discussion. Then thank you Knights of Columbus, appreciate it.
Yeah, an annual, an annual donation too.
Right, right. Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
And I'll vote yes.
Uh, action to accept a donation of seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents from Target Corporation from the Take Charge of Education program. Do we have a motion?
So.
Or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Target. Again. Uh, Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
And I'll vote yes.
Any committee meetings here that we have to add to?
No, I just maybe want to clarify in the work session, when do we want to, on the thirtieth?
Yep. Clarify time?
Yeah.
Thirtieth is Monday?
It's a Monday, you want to do like six-thirties and like, lock it up to our six-thirty, thirty kind of?
Yeah. Is that all right, is everybody in the work session? I'll start at six-thirty. Oh, let's see here. Motion for executive session. Sue?
Yeah, stated.
Go for it, something.
And we, Jim has moved that adjourn to executive session pursuant to state statute eighteen point eight five one C for consideration of employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluations of public employees to have paragraph nineteen point eight five one E to deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever headed over bargaining reasons. Do we have a second?
Second.
Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.